I'll call this meeting to the Smith County Board of Supervisors to order. We have with us tonight Kenneth Pennington for the Building Inspection Office to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing for Pastor David Cross of Highland Fellowship Church to lead us in the location.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Just pray, Father, we come to you, Lord, first of all, we just want to thank you and praise you and glorify you. God, thank you for loving us and caring for us and promising us that you care each and every means. God, we thank you for your love and your goodness and your mercy, but God, of everything, we thank you for your amazing grace. God, we're just looking so forward to even tomorrow on Good Friday, the day that God, that we set aside, that God, we're just so thankful of what you did, of how you demonstrated your love for us, that you loved us so much, that you sent your Son into this world to suffer and bleed and die on an unworthy cross, pay a price that we couldn't pay. And Lord, we're looking forward to Sunday, Easter Sunday, a day that God, that we meet, that we celebrate, that God, that you're a risen Savior, that you're no longer in the grave, that God, that glorious morning, that you arose, that you defeated death held in the grave, and God, you've got the keys of hell in your hands. God, will you just lift up this meeting to you? God, thank you so much for this board of supervisors and for all those that serve at our community. God, that they just have a heart to just see our community be the best it can be. So God, I just pray for them, that you'll give them the wisdom and knowledge and understanding of God, not what necessarily that we want, but God, we shall come, God, what do you want? What is best for us? What is best for our community? So God, just lead, guide, and direct. God, I just drew blessings upon them and their families. So God, I thank you, I praise you, and I love you, and I say these things in your name all over the Thanksgiving. Amen. All right. Thank you, God. Thank you so much for all y'all today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd welcome on. We haven't been able to introduce Kenneth yet, but I just wanted to go ahead and take, make time to welcome our new building inspector. He's been here since January, December.
Awesome.
So I think we introduced him to the board.
I thought you were the pastor.
Boy, did you have us fooled.
That's nice to hear.
Thank you.
Just be ready, next time you may have to be in vacation.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna change the order up a little bit, and we're gonna jump down now to N A speed study request for Route 91. Mr. John Clark, I think, did you want to speak on this?
If I may.
Come forward and speak.
Before he gets started, I will note that you have a map that we laid out at your dais, that I put together, thanks to Mr. Williams for finding this on BDOT's website, that's the speed limits of the county, and it kinda shows where the transitions start. And Mr. Clark lives to the east of the transition, on the left there, transition from 55 to 45.
Thank you. You might have a better map than I have. If I could get these out, I think I made enough. But let me start at the beginning on this, if I may. On this map, it started out as a deer problem. If you look, my house is 2654, and the area north of Route 91 that is the area where deer are congregating, there's a huge population up there, and what happens late winter, that they start coming across the road in the area below Route 91. My renter, Jay DeBusk, who Bill and Roscoe know real well, and they know this area, that they start coming over there in late winter, and it's been a real big problem here the last four or five years. He plants a cover crop, this cover crop starts coming up, and they're getting dependent on food source in February and March. On the back sheet, I've reported four deer car crashes in the past six weeks. I've drove two of them out of the road myself, because I've called dispatch, and dispatch says that BDOT doesn't answer the calls on weekends, which is no big deal, I pulled them out of the road, but they made a traffic hazard. So that's the situation on deer there, and I've counted dozens and dozens in the field, and again, they're crossing Route 91 to come to feed in those areas, particularly in late winter, February, March, and that's caused the deer car crashes. And BDOT says, on that second page from Josh Lewis, that they'll look into it, there's five or more reported, and I'm sure there's been many more than that. But while I'm on that, that I do ask you your action on, for a study, on the map I handed out, Sean, I'm sorry, I didn't.
There you go.
I didn't see yours. Thank you. My information from Saltville, where Route 107, 91 meets, 7.5 miles, to Broad Ford, where Route 42 and 90, Route 42, 91 begin, about 7.5 miles. The speed limits in Saltville, all 25, 35, 45 miles an hour, and Broad Ford from Possum Hall Road up is 35, 45 also. And for some reason, there's, in that area, with those four houses where I live, the speed limit's 55. So I talked to BDOT about that, and God, he necessary, said it might, I don't know if he said it was anomaly, or it might have been at some term for it, I can't think of the term he had, but he said before they could act on it, or actually Josh Lewis said, that the board had to make a formal request to do a study for that section. And Sean, I think, okay, this is showing 2.4 miles, I thought it was a half mile, but anyway, that's what I would like to request the board to do, as far as a speed study, to go along with the safety problem that's very demonstratable about the deers crossing this area and being hit, Mr. Chairman.
So also in your, in your package, you have a draft resolution for your consideration that BDOT provided to me, if you're interested in moving forward, this is page 133 of your packet.
And Mr. Clark, just to be clear, is the, the speed limit that they have here at 55, is that a safe speed to travel without the beef, without the animals there, or is it, did the animals drop the safety?
Well, where I'm picking up the deer, and again, I've done four in two months, the speed limit's 55. So I think it, you know, is that gonna solve a problem of dropping to 45? Well, probably not, but is it gonna mitigate it? I would hope it would.
So is the road, I guess obviously the State Department has determined it is safe to travel at 55 without the animals. It would be safer to reduce it, not factoring in the animals, just the terrain and curvature of the road alone.
Yeah.
Is 45 more appropriate?
You know, I'm no traffic engineer, but certainly, I lived there, and of course, when my house was built, it was, horse and buggies went by, and that's graduated from that, but yes, it'd certainly be safer for all involved if it was dropped to 45.
Okay.
45 would be plenty, too, there. But I agree with y'all, way, John, and I've seen the deer, and I'm with you 100 percent. But anybody under 40 years old, they can't see numbers. They're gonna come through their barrel all the time anyway.
Yeah, well, it might help.
It's 25 where I live, and they do 60.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, it could help some, it would mitigate it some, but it's, the last crash was Friday night, a month ago, a lady, Ms. Anne Hutton, she was a home from Tannersville, and I just had me coming back from a takeout of Bucks, and she hit a deer, I saw it, and then she pulled my driveway, I helped her husband, King, we had to dispatch the deer, but, so it's, it's got to help, but it's not gonna mitigate it.
As you're going towards Veterans Road, when it drops off to the 40 mile per hour zone, does it pick back up to 55 out through there a little ways?
Above Broad Ford.
It does in a straight, straight.
Then it cuts back down.
But then it cuts back down. I'm just trying to understand why they, how they justify those two miles right there of having that.
Well, you went by the straight, straight, like Phil said there. It's kinda straight. I don't, yeah, and the population decreases after you get around the curve there. Where the old steak shop used to be, you may be too young for that. You know where the old steak shop used to be?
On the left.
On the right.
That big curve.
Going to school.
I brought the young.
Is it 55 at Ricky's?
We're the ones that go 60.
I don't know what it is at Ricky's. I think that's, yeah, it's 55.
Yeah, yeah. That's a long straight stretch. For example, everything in McCrady and North Holston, on your left on my map, is 45. And then suddenly, when it gets to 26, 25, 57, Pam Smith lives there, there's a sign that says 55, and that's only, and then going eastbound, westbound, there's no 55 mile on there sign, so I guess it's 55 where otherwise posted, I guess.
There, there's where Pam used to live, and going toward town, there's one that says 45.
45 going west.
Right across the road from that one, the other way, says 55.
That's what I don't understand, yeah.
I'm all for it.
I looked at that the other night.
Yeah.
I'm all for a study, to see where we need to go, what things need to be. I'd like to see them do it all the way up to the school, if they're gonna do it, I guess it includes that, I mean, I don't see them, this is one particular part. I get the deer thing, but I don't know if this is gonna solve a deer thing. I don't think 45's too slow, and I don't think 45's too fast. Damn deer running from me, that'd be in 10 miles in there. If I'm going through places over there, I know where these deer usually crosses, I'm usually slowing down anyway, because I've hit three or four myself. But if we're gonna do a study, I'd like to do it all the way to the schoolhouse. Starting with, or do you want it to start back down that way? What?
I would recommend from Upper Port Valley Watson Gap Road, maybe, because that's about where the signs are.
From corporate limits up to the sky.
I, I agree with that. That's a good idea, from corporate limits up to the, I, what, what does this cost us? I mean, what's?
It don't cost anything, I don't think.
BDOT, we'll, we'll cover it out of the secondary fund, out of our portion of the secondary fund, but we don't have to pay it ourselves.
I'd like to see it go all the way up to the school and up Long Hollow, because we got heavy traffic, and Long Hollow, I don't even think has a posted thing. And as much as I like teachers, the biggest cringe was in the world about speed, and if we're gonna do a study, let's catch it off.
Well, if it's, if it's okay with the chairman, I'd recommend then passing the resolution as amended, and we can change the wording to basically Route Saltville Highway slash, that it's beginning, be up beginning.
9142.
Yeah, 9142, to the Long Hollow.
To Valley Road.
Valley Road, Long Hollow.
Be up again at 16.
Valley Road, and, yeah, we can, we can work with the word.
Be up again is Route 16.
Long Hollow might be like Red Hill, though, in my, like, in my district, I want a speed study on Red Hill, but there's not enough population or high enough traffic count, so we'd probably have to check that.
Well, we could ask for.
We can question, taking, I just turned.
If permissible, please include Long Hollow.
So, so are you?
Bluegrass Highway.
So are we talking about Route 16, 10?
Bluegrass for.
Two, well, 16, Long Hollow.
Probably just stop at Long Hollow.
To Valley Road.
Because I think beyond is mostly 45, because it's so hurry.
Yeah. Do you want to get to that stretch, or do you?
I would, I would, I would at least go to Valley Road, if not back all the way around to 107, that's where the high traffic is. You know how you come up Long Hollow and turn towards 107? I would make that complete circle if we're gonna make a study and do it. Not complete circle, but three quarters of a circle.
Three quarters, usually, really?
You know, with the deer aside, that's a rural community over there, and people are out along the road a lot, and I'm all for the study and turn it down a little bit where it needs to be turned down.
The places where the deer jump out, is it somewhere that, like, deer fence could be added by DDOT, or is it just scattered randomly?
It's a mountain, across the road into a peripheral field, and that's the main problem, so I don't think, I mean, that's gonna be a big expense.
Field full of corn.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't want to mislead the board, I don't want to mislead the board, but I think this is gonna qualify for deer signs, but BDOT hadn't made that determination, but if you go by the criteria, I've done four in the past two months, reported a deer.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Let's entertain a motion, because our debate right now will be useless, we'd have to do it all again when they get back with their study.
I make a motion to amend this resolution here to include what we spoke of, and make a motion to move forward with the study.
Okay, we have a motion to, in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous.
Thank you, off.
Thank you, John.
Now, we're trying to do this in order. We have no public hearings for tonight, that I'm aware of, and no public presentations. We had the minutes of previous meeting in our packet, does anyone have any corrections, changes, or entertain a motion to approve?
So many.
Second. Have a motion to approve in a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you do the amendment to the agenda already? Have you done that motion?
We don't have, we don't have to do it.
Probably.
We got legal advice on it.
Financial status report. Mrs. Richardson will report on the most recent financials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
She won't tell us we're rich.
I'll just direct you to page, sorry. I'll just direct you to page 19 in your agenda, and I'm not going to go over all this, I just want to point out a few things. First of all, I just want to talk about the Indian balance for March. The treasurer's report shows that it's $19,240,234.31. That was about $706,000 more than this time last year. If you want to flip on the next page, you'll note that there's your water and sewer uncollected, and your uncollected killing taxes, and the, those past due amounts that have been written off or forgiven or whatever are no longer on this spreadsheet. So, thank you, thank you so much. The expenditure summary's there for your review, followed by a revenue summary, and then the treasurer's accountability follows that, as we've discussed those in the past. If you have any questions on any of those, we'll attempt to address them. And other than that, that's all I have.
Anyone have any particular questions on the financial report? Looks like we've already appropriated, except we, down in your, we have one appropriation we have to add, but we'll get to that here later on. Moving on to payment of invoices and accounts payable, attached, we had a list in your packet of the invoices to pay. Mine was backwards, I felt like I was doing a Chinese puzzle. But I can still read it and still see what we was trying to pay, so.
Make motion to be paid.
Have a motion to approve, have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous, everybody moved it. Citizens Town. We will allow anyone who wants to speak, come forward and spend three minutes talking to us.
I'm the only one on the list there.
Is this Mr. Wassom or Mr. Lawson?
This is Mr. Lawson. This is Mr. Wassom, I still live at 321 Wassom Circle. And when you start talking about noise, I made a few comments a couple of weeks ago, but that's kind of what jogged my desire to say a few words. So this is a petition to the Smith County Board of Supervisors to help redress a grievance of landowners and residents along Watermill Road. Watermill Road is, got Marion Addresses, oh, the house is there, War, Marion Addresses, but it's in the county. The grievance is this, excessively loud and frequent noise coming from a weapon shooting range, gun shooting range, not airbows and arrows or anything. It's adjacent to 160 Watermill Road. 160 Watermill Road is the town of Marion Water Treatment Plant. And this excessively loud noise is adversely affecting residents at 100 Watermill Road and 135 Watermill Road. So I got some emails from mothers of children at those two different addresses. I've excerpted a few little, to save time, excerpted stuff from the latter, if you want to see the latter, I can show them to you, but from the person at 100 Watermill Road, she says, "The noise is annoying and scary. Shooting after dark is unacceptable. It looks like military training in full tactical gear." That's the mother of three children. At 135 Watermill Road, a mother of four, a mother of four children in her home, both of her married. Okay, quote, "Constant loud gun shooting, so loud it wakes my kids up. Drills at night deserve sleep. I'm afraid my children might get injured." So those are the specific complaints. Little background, I built a home up there in 1979, and somewhere around 81 or so, the town officers started shooting up there, it was nothing but an open field. Over the decades, the shooting has escalated, in the past few years, personnel from the following groups are shooting there now, or have shot there, town police, sheriff department, Virginia Department of Conservation Recreation, Virginia Department of Corrections, Virginia Department, the Virginia Department of Corrections Training Academy. They'll bring 20 to 30 people up there in four, five, six vans, and then they'll spend some time getting training and shooting. I've been told the individuals, I've been told about people that shoot up there, that people from the FBI or military, maybe they're passing through Tanner something, will go up there and practice a little bit. On one occasion, there were men in tactical gear, training on my property up there, I asked them to leave, and they left. The noise is particularly intense when automatic or semi-automatic weapons are fired, or when groups of people fire simultaneously. Numerous times over the decades, I've asked representatives of the various shooting group to train elsewhere. I've talked to some of the leaders there on site, and said, you know, would you want this next to your house? Neither of them didn't answer, or they said, "Talk to somebody else," or, "No, I wouldn't." To train elsewhere, and I've notified the town of my concerns from time to time over the decades. A few years ago, I was told by the town that a sound barrier was in the works, and I think they were looking for another place to have a shooting range. However, the problem is still there. My solution is, if people would live Golden Rule. I don't think hardly anybody up there that shoots would want to have shooting up there, if it was next to their, if they live there, if it was next to their home. And our people, it doesn't bother. Some people that live up there don't, aren't there during the day, they're off at work or whatever, these women with children are there most all the time. So what I'm asking is the board of supervisors to take the lead and help relocate the shooting range to a more appropriate, more remote location. I know there are counties in the United States that run there, have their own shooting range at a profit, and there may be private individuals in the county that could operate a shooting range. But the organizations that I've named, town, town police, sheriff department, conservation recreation, corrections, they've got land themselves that, and certainly them getting together, could certainly find, fund, and operate a shooting range at some location where they're not a neighborhood. So any questions? If anyone would like copy of what I've said, I'd be happy to give you a copy.
Is that town property, I think?
Yes, it's town property. But the noise comes over my property. I own a lot of the land up there. There's a church there, the four homes, there's another house there, a little distant location. And we're talking about the distance of one to two football fields away. There used to be a little forest of trees protecting 135 Watermill Road, but they don't cut them all down, and it made the noise a whole lot more intense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we could probably have a discussion with the town, would be the first step, rather than take anything formal right now, let's have a discussion, to keep Mr. Wassom informed is what we're.
We've been able to spend a little conversation.
Okay.
These two shooting ranges in Saltville. Have you ever go over there?
No.
Well, you go out there quite a bit. Hunt Club has one, and then the town has one.
Okay.
I don't think the Hunt Club charges for that, so.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, closing Citizens Town. Mr. Watson, we'll look into that and keep you informed what we're trying to do.
Right, I'm not trying to ruffle any feathers or anything, but.
It's a reasonable request, I think, you know, if we can work something out. Moving on to old business, following up on the public hearing from March 24th, a draft ordinance for the board's consideration, so attachment forward. I'll have a page number for you.
Page 99.
Okay.
What happens when you have seven pages of financial report?
We need to, we've had our public hearing on, had our public hearing on this, and now it's, we need to repeal it, so we can get to work on a new ordinance that's enforceable. So I'm, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the noise ordinance. Would that be an ordinance?
Repeal of the noise ordinance.
Okay, I'll hear a motion to repeal the noise ordinance, on page 99.
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to repeal the rest of the noise ordinance.
I'll say.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? I think we pretty much beat this to death last time.
Yeah.
Okay, we, I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this one. So I vote to repeal it, yes. Roscoe?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Christopher?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Courtney?
Yes.
Seems like it's unanimous, so we will move that to appeal, and we will begin with another new ordinance, one that's workable and enforceable.
Yeah, we spell, we fix it on the roll.
We have some committee reports now. Budget Committee, and I'm gonna, if you don't mind, that'd work better for me if you.
Don't mind a bit, don't mind a bit. So Budget Committee had a meeting on March 31st, we actually had two Budget Committee work sessions that I'll, we have reports for. The first one was March 31st, we had a few different things on the agenda, the first one was budget amendment number nine. You remember toward the end of the last fiscal year, the town of Saltville came to the county asking for a loan related to the EMS program that they were installing as of July 1. They are now at a point where invoices are coming in, that they need to go ahead and start pulling funds down for that loan. I'd like to go ahead, that's what budget amendment number nine is, so it would amend the budget for that $90,000 loan. Their, their loan, first loan payments due middle of June, so this'll also, basically, we're giving the money before their first payments due anyway, so that was the recommendation. The motion was made by Rive Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal to recommend approving budget amendment number nine to include $90,000 for the purchase of equipment related to Saltville EMS. Chi-Hi District Supervisor Michael Sturgill taken the motion, and it was passed unanimously, that's a recommendation from the committee.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, if you can, say aye. Any opposed likewise? Sounds like amendment number nine is approved.
Okay. Next item was a budget transfer request. You'll remember we sold, the EDA sold the corner. Um, you'll remember we, uh, sold the, the EDA sold the cornerstone building, um, to Mount Rogers Community Services. However, in, uh, in the current budget, we did have some funds that was set aside for maintenance of that building and for electrical costs. Since we didn't need those, uh, Mr. Greer, our building ground superintendent, was asking that we, um, transfer those funds, thirty-seven hundred dollars from the cornerstone building to the health department maintenance line item for, um, janitorial housekeeping, um, needs. So motion was made by Chilhaway District Supervisor Michael Sturgill to recommend the approving, approval of the transfer of thirty-seven hundred dollars from the cornerstone building to the health department, uh, in those different lines. Uh, Raleigh, Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal seconded the motion, and it was passed unanimously, so that is a committee recommendation.
Okay, any other discussion? Um, do they have a specific need for it over to the health department, or just...
I think there were some repairs they wanted to do before the end of the fiscal year. They have some, some, um, rain issues, some guttering issues that are, the water is leaking back toward the building rather than away from the building they want to fix, and there are a few just minor things.
Okay, that kind of thing needs to be fixed. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it passed unanimously.
Okay. So the next item was pre-audit services. We're working, while we're working through the, um, RFP process for our auditor, for our full audit, we do have a need to go ahead and approve the, um, the one-year agreement with our pre-autor group, um, and then they've just let, thank you, Hickok Ground. Um, so the, uh, the committee reviewed that, a cost of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars for the county, thirty-seven thou- thirty-seven hundred fifty dollars for the EDA. Um, following discussion, a motion was made by Chilhaway District Supervisor Michael Sturgill to recommend the approval of the required pre-audit services Hickok Grounding Company, providing the county with the pre-audit services for fiscal year ending June thirty twenty-two, and to authorize the county administrator to execute the necessary documents. Um, Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal seconded that motion, and it was passed unanimously, so that's a recommendation from each committee.
All righty, we have the motion. Uh, any further discussion?
Mr. Uh, Chairman, what, what exactly does the pre-audit services pertain to?
They do the paper, they, they get the books ready for the auditor. In other words, the, I mean, the auditor does a true audit. They walk in the door, we hand them the bookbooks, which shows all the adjustments for the year, shows them all the, um, activity. The auditors are not having to do many adjusting journal entries. All that's been done, they just have the accounts to do the procedures on and actually do an audit.
Very good, thank you, sir.
And on that same line of things, their costs have stayed reasonable, uh, but our audit fees keep going up and up, and one of the reasons, personal thing right now, um, the state is requiring the auditors that do public entities to do more and more, for lack of a better way to say it, to do more and more non-accounting work. They have to audit and make sure this person's got a license, or that person's done this or done that. It's to the point now where public accounting firms don't want to do municipal audits. You know, down here in this end of the state, there's one or two firms, and that's it. And they can pretty well charge what they want to charge. We need, if nothing else, to begin the lobby Richmond to help us with that. Uh, I'm so old, I remember when the auditor of public accounts used to do the audits. So I don't, I don't advocate to go back to that, but there has to be something done, relieve some of the responsibility of the auditor or something, so we can get the fees in a more reasonable range, and we get more firms wanting to do public audits. I mean, it's, they got a stranglehold on it right now. So, you know, I'm just, public announcement, we need to be audi- we need to be lobbying Richmond on that. Um, did we vote on that? I just got my sermon. Yeah. All right, any, any more discussion on that? All those in favor of Brown, uh, Brown Edwards and Company, Hickok Brown and Company, uh, doing our pre-audit work, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it was unanimous.
Okay, the next item we discussed was the, uh, proposed budget for next year, uh, discussions. We did have, we reviewed where we, where we stood at that point. Um, I talked about the, uh, the five percent proposed recommendation, or recommendation from Davenport from last year for water sewer utility increases. Um, had actually a, a good conversation about that. Uh, committee encouraged me to go back to the drawing board for a two to three percent potential increase rather than a full five, and, um, I worked on that, so no action, um, from that, um, discussion topic. Uh, next item we talked about was, was a further conversation regarding fund requests from community centers and community, um, I won't stop agencies, but, um, resources around the county. Um, and I summarized the, the five or six that we had in front of us. You'll see there in the, in the packet with a, a breakdown of the costs, uh, for, for each, really the total. If you look at all six of the needs, we're looking at six hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars total, um, realizing that that's not possible to fund out of, uh, one year or one, um, uh, set of reserves, trying to spread out and, and come up with a plan. We talked about, uh, what those highest priorities were out of the, uh, the needs. Following that discussion, um, Chilhaway District Supervisor Michael Sturgill made a motion to recommend providing, uh, funding amounts of the following amount, following out of current reserves and some budget surplus that we have. First one being Conorac Community Center's well replacement, twenty-five thousand dollars. The second one being Nevo Community Center, um, flooring repairs and replacement at sixty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. The third one being Adwoaf Fire Department's roof, roof replacement request at twenty-seven thousand dollars. And the fourth, uh, being Rich Valley Fair's commercial kitchen request with an unf- and this is a little different, with upfront grant of fifty thousand dollars, a seed funding, an additional dollar-for-dollar match with, to an additional sixty-two thousand dollars five hundred, uh, duh, with a cutoff of April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for the fundraising match. That would help them meet their full goal. Um, Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal seconded the motion, and it was unanimously approved. I'll go back to the Rich Valley real quick. The, their total request was, um, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, the thought was to, in, on the committee side, was to provide some seed funding to get things started, and if for every dollar that they could come up with, we'd give an additional dollar to, to make that happen. Um, you'll, we'll have a further report here at the, the next budget committee summary here in a minute, um, to further that discussion, but that is a recommendation out of the, um, the budget committee for your consideration.
Okay. Yeah, I, I get where you're going. I don't know how they're gonna come up with it. My question is, Nevo is getting sixty thousand dollars, is that right?
Yes, sir. Sixty, sixty-one thousand was, Nevo gave us a, a three-tier approach. These are the ones that we have to have, these are the ones we need, and these are the ones we want. So the have-to-have was that sixty-one thousand dollar roof, or not roof, flooring replacement, and that finished up the entire floor.
Here's where I'm at. I think I like helping all the communities. And seeing something done. Nevo and Rich Valley are fifteen, twenty minutes apart. Matter of fact, I had this comment with Ms. Pence, and I don't want to make anybody bad, but sometimes you can't, it is what it is. You know, the fire there is, it, it serves the whole community. Uh, the community center, anybody can use it. I'm not saying you can't, Nevo, but instead of, I don't know how they're gonna match a dollar to dollar and get a hundred and seventy. They'd have to do a whole lot of fundraising. I ain't for sure we should think about taking the sixty thousand dollars and moving it to Rich Valley, because I think it's the right thing to do. In my conversation with some of the Nevo people, let's fix this one community center. And, you know, I know it's a fifteen-minute drive, but you can't help but, I, I'd like to help Nevo, but I don't know that, maybe we ought to bring a lady from Rich Valley back in here and sit fifty, fifty thousand's gonna get them off the ground where they can, where they can move. I hate to give them fifty thousand dollars, and they can't move with what they got coming in here. They can't even get going. You see where I'm going with it?
I, I did have a conversation with her after the budget committee, just to give her an idea of where the budget committee was going, and, um, she, she basically told me that, you know, she, she'd get, get started on, on things, even if it was going to be a low-interest loan for a little while to, to, until they, until they, they closed that gap. In my personal opinion, and I, I don't want to speak for the commie- all its committees, but I'll throw out, my recommendation would be, if they were to come up with sixty-one, sixty-two thousand five hundred dollar loan to get the other sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be against that, because that, in, in theory, you'd end up with a sixty thousand dollar loan and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar expansion. There's very few banks that won't provide that kind of support, so that's what I was, I had in my mind.
Go ahead and expand on what was you, what you and I talked about.
For, but, that was out of the budget committee, out of the second budget committee, so we'll skip ahead to the second budget committee recommendation. Basically, what we were looking to do was figuring out how to speed things up and, um, with purchases and everything, so the second committee, budget committee recommendation that was in, move, you know that one? Yeah, yeah, that was April seventh. Basically, motion to move all the, provide the funding to the EDA. What I'd like to do is go ahead and pay the contractors ourselves, get things rolling, make sure we, we're able to save the, the, um, the, the projects. The county can't do it because of its procurement issue, procurement issues. Uh, we'd have to do sealed bids for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project, for instance. But if the EDA was to pay for the, for the projects, um, then we can move to get, move a lot faster. The EDA might even consider providing the loan. We haven't, we haven't, um, uh, proposed it to them yet, but, uh, you know, that, that might be another avenue that the EDA can get in, involved with.
Where are those ARPA funds coming in, um, can we use any of them?
Can submit that request, the ARPA.
Sure. I mean, that, that could be an option. What, looking at the budget that we're currently in right now, it, what I was, what I've been seeing is we have some surplus that, we have revenues that are, that are coming in a lot higher than, not a lot higher, but higher than what we had proposed or expected. So I was wanting to propose using some of those surpluses to fund these in this year, and then plan on the, 'cause there's other requests out of this that would be next year and the following year. That we can plan on.
The only, the only thing I'm think, and I don't know the answer, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't, I don't have no idea what this answer is to be. The only thing I know they needed was the kitchen and everything to get started before the fair to be in operation.
Yeah.
And I like seeing Nevo get their forward, but that was just the start of what they needed. They needed a roof and everything, but I also don't like just throwing beaucoup of money out everywhere you go. I don't even know where a community, I represent this side of the mountain too, and I've thought and thought in my conversation to Nevo, I don't know where a community center is on this side, but what you do if them people come in and ask for money?
Plus the nearest Adwoaf Fire Department.
The closest one's Adwoaf.
Yep, or the Maryland.
Well, I mean, I'm all for Adwoaf, I'm all for them all, but if it's gonna come down to where you gotta split hairs, and we got two loc- what I'm, my point is, if we got two located in, on the north side of Walker, and we can't get the job done for both of them, then maybe we oughta consider, you see what I'm trying to say?
The thing with the ARPA funds would be the timing of it, though, if Rich Valley's wanting to get started before the fair, 'cause we're not doing anything with ARPA funds till our water study gets done.
Well, what about if we waited on Nevo and moved the fund and possibly had the ARPA funds for Nevo if we're gonna use it for community center? Rich Valley will, I'm sorry, Rich Valley will have to get going pretty soon if they're gonna do this.
I was just gonna ask you, I, and I, and Rich Valley's a great thing. I was gonna say, do they, does it break even every year, or they turn a profit, or how's...
I haven't looked at the books, uh, some of them's in the past years, years ago, maybe ten years ago, and I don't even know they kept books, so I don't, I, I can't say whether they do or, I, I don't think they did, because we, that was, that was concerning sometime. Now, I think the lady that's in there now that's coming forward with us is keeping pretty good books. Now, I haven't seen them, probably wouldn't know what I was looking at if I seen them. Uh, but, you know, that, that community center right there, that, that building's a good thing, and to have, what they're wanting to do is a good thing. So I just don't know how we're gonna get it done. I don't think fifty thousand dollars, did she feel like it would?
Well, the total of a hundred and thirteen was what she was looking at rather than the fifty, just the fifty, but, um, I think she was concerned, didn't have, she wasn't overly concerned, didn't express a huge amount of concerns, but she was concerned about, you know, the timing. That's what I was thinking about, you know, with the EDA and, and trying to work with the bank, or with the EDA as being, serving as the bank. Could help speed things up.
Also, part of the requirements would be that we had to have some good financials this time, maybe, maybe not now, because there's been no, no gate receipts, uh, uh, no, but there hasn't been no accounting in the past for gate receipts. They don't pass out a ticket, they don't do anything. We would have to have some things in place to assure that the money is there.
I, I agree with that, that's been my pet kick of the whole thing, uh, you know, giving any money to, as far as the, the Fire Association goes, or that building there. Um, I think I'll be records in a yes and a no to everything you do, but I, in my conversation with her, I think she's a little different than what we've been used to, where I think she does that, dots out lies and crosses the t's.
Well, that's gonna be part of the requirements that, that we have to have, that thing. And as a follow-up to that, um, Tuesday night, I was in a meeting with, uh, well, I just had a meeting, and one of the members that I know, the tobacco commission was there, and I, I mentioned that we were trying to get, help some of these community centers out with meeting places, and he approached me after that meeting and says, "Why don't you put a request in the tobacco commission? That's what we're looking to do right now." Those, that's the type of thing, we want to go back into these tobacco communities and put some funds back in there, and I'm thinking, well, this is exactly what we need." So they're taking, they're open, if we can get it done, May, they have another meeting to approve projects, and if we can get our paperwork done, we might get it approved in May, if we can get approval. Don't hurt to ask.
Well, I agree.
So would it be possible to create the funding, uh, the full funding request for Rich Valley Fair, with the understanding there's certain amount on the front end that's a grant, the rest is a low-interest loan, and then dovetail the potential, uh, tobacco grant as a payment towards that a few months down the road? Is that, number one, legal or ethical to, to try to pull that off?
I...
And, and the, the back end of that is, if we, if we fund it as a loan, then we have, we hold a receipt to it, that if they don't ever pay it off, then the county could take that over and then liquidate it, get the money back, so it's not a loss issue, potentially not a loss issue. I'm not saying I want to go after that, but it's a little bit of security for the rest of the county's financial investment in that. Plus, it gets them their leg up to get going, and give them a chance to be an ongoing viable entity there to, to generate revenue.
And we'd be the fiscal agent.
Yes.
Mount Rogers Plan Commission might be able to do some of that, the flow in and slow.
Yeah, I can add that to the list.
Really? You should probably get something, all of it. I don't, but someone who can...
I just want to make it plain that I'm not trying to kick Nevo out, I'm just looking at options, you know? Sometimes you just think, no money around. We definitely ain't gonna be able to fund both of them at the amounts they wanted, but what I'm seeing sitting here, so if you're gonna fund something, then fund something that benefits a biggest group of the county is what, one of my points, kind of.
Sean, would all, would all these groups have some type of account, you know, in other words, some type of general ledger that they would have, or not, you know?
Not all of them have, have moneymaker project, uh, like the Rich Valley Fair would, uh, Adwoaf Fire Department, I guess, does with their bingo.
And we'd get their financial reports of their budget requests.
Yeah, we get that. Um, Nevo, I think they're more of a community center. I don't know that they have huge annual fundraising events. Um, and the, um, the Conorac, same thing, they're, they're a community center. Their, their, their concern is, they, their main fundraiser is a pancake breakfast that they can't do as well because it's a, they're under a boil water notice right now. So the thing they cook with is cooking with bottled water.
But they actually give us each year a financial statement.
Every, for every question.
I think Mrs. Pennington, I think maybe the name.
And, yeah.
But they're real good about giving us every year a financial statement of how, of how they spend, what money comes in, and how they spend every penny. So we, we can go back a long way on that one.
Um, Mr. Chairman, let me ask a crazy off-the-wall question here. Um, how many of these proposed locations serve as polling places? Or potentially could serve as a polling place? Or potentially could serve as a polling place, I eat Nebo, I, I don't know.
Everyone, I'm not sure the fair does, but the other three do.
Does Nebo serve as a polling place?
Well, it used, I don't think it does.
So where's the school at?
Yeah, it's a school now.
Plus if you're looking at it that way, we need to add the Riverside School in there too, cause that's one we need to upgrade.
Yeah.
It was a pleasure, just trying to get the ball moving, so to speak.
I ain't trying to stop the ball from rolling, I was just throwing it out, get some thoughts. I mean, if this is the way we need to start out and go, fine.
I mean, one of the things I look at is these, these are rural communities, they're not taking, or they're not getting the benefit, they're, they're paying real estate, personal property tax, just like everybody else. But they're not getting all the services that someone on the edge of Marion or edge of Salvo is getting. And I just think that's one way we, we showed it, hey, your money is, is, we're trying to appreciate you, trying to help you with your needs in the community, and having a meeting place for the community is one of those things.
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent, Nebo, on their seawater and sewer and, and some of the things that the others deal with, and I agree with you. And I hope maybe, or since I know we're waiting on a water study, but I hope maybe, you know, still hitting the budget so hard, we can come up with some of this ARPC money to help some of these places out there. I don't know that we can, but I don't know where the water study's going.
I don't think we could, I, I'll be honest with you, I don't think we can get ARPC money, but I think, uh, Tobacco Commission, uh, the, uh, Mount Rogers, uh, there's two or three other sources we can look at, you know? Main thing is get it going right now and look for what we can do to help finance it.
Starts at ours, though.
Last week in July.
So they're under a time crunch, we, they gotta be up going to be able to have a potential business.
If we, if we were to go ahead and fund those positions, and then you have the Tobacco Commission, uh, did you mention the EDA? And, and these, and Mount Rogers, is it something they would be willing to, if it need to be funded ahead of time, to reimburse the county? If that's?
I'm not sure about the Tobacco Commission, they're a fifty-fifty grant, so if we need a hundred thousand dollars, they'll give you fifty and you come up with fifty. Which if you, if we're, if we're voting tonight to approve, say, Nebo the sixty-one thousand, we could get another sixty-one thousand from the Tobacco Commission for, for Nebo or, yeah, for them to, to go toward that. I think they needed a total of about a hundred and eighty, if I remember correctly, seems like I was.
It just seems like there's some, it's leading some stuff down pretty quick and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just wondering if that may be an option.
I think you gotta, history, go a little bit on history now, go a little bit on history now. I think you have to, if you've already spent the money, they won't reimburse you, the Tobacco Commission. I think you gotta get the approval and then spend it, but you can, you can do that almost immediately. In that, uh, uh, you know, if we can get in on this round in, in May, get it approved, get everything in place, and we get approved by the Tobacco Commission, you know, they, they could turn us down. And, uh, we can, we can make the drawdown request in May and move forward. And I think that's what we need to do.
Would it for Rich Valley or Nebo?
That would give Rich, would that not give Rich Valley enough time for us to know ahead of time if it's in May?
Uh, it, it, now, they may approve some, they may approve something in May, but the checks may not flow until August or September. It does, I mean, there's usually a timeframe to negotiate contracts and all that. I think that.
If we're the fiscal agent, we could still.
Yeah, the, the, the Tobacco Commission, in my personal opinion, would be a great spot for Nebo. Great spot for, um, uh, Conorac. Rich Valley and their timeframe, time crunch, I, I don't think it, that's as good of a, of a use. It's, unless we were focused on next season, not this current, this current year.
Well, in all reality, we may have to focus on next season. I mean, we can do what we can do, and that's all we can do. I, I think the only thing is, I go back to the other point, and I'm walking out here earlier myself tonight, I wanted to go to a ballgame, but, you know, the size, whether we're gonna give Rich Valley fifty and Nebo sixty, or if we're gonna combine and move one forward, is what I'm getting at. To me, if there's a chance of getting, and I don't want them people up there at Nebo mad at me, hello and what, I'm just here trying to figure things out. To me, if we can get one going, a hundred and ten thousand dollars, that'd be better. Sixty thousand's gonna get Nebo forward, I agree. Fifty thousand ain't even gonna get Rich Valley, ain't even gonna get the doors open. Now, that, she might enter your conversation with you, she might say, yeah, sure, I'll take fifty thousand dollars, we'll do something with it. But if we give them this money, it's gotta go for what she asked for.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna finish proud of them, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know that in your conversation with her, she understood where all this goes. And I'm not accountant, you people are accountants, I'm a troublemaker, just trying to solve the small issues. I don't know the details of working out accounting thing, but that's what I'm throwing out here, I'd rather see Rich Valley go.
So just so I'm clear, wrapping my head all around this, we would kill the motion made by the committee. We would make a new motion that we would approve Conorac's wa- well replacement, Edel Fire Department's roof replacement, and then Rich Valley Fair's commercial kitchen, but instead of fifty thousand, it would be one hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah, one seventy-five.
Oh, I thought you said.
Well, one seventy-five would be given to Nebo sixty to the, so they don't have to do sixty in fundraising. Cause the, the Budget Committee's recommendation was a hundred and twelve-five with a sixty-two thousand five hundred dollar match, basically.
Okay, well, I would still want to do their, like, to try to give the match, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, what I think you're trying to say, what I'm trying to understand, we're gonna kill Nebo for a little while to get Rich Valley in.
Right.
And I don't wanna say we're not gonna help Nebo, but we might just try to find a deed to trust or back the funds or whatever.
Right, and then the event later on when we move to phase two, cause I think the goal of this board was to help all of our community centers over a period of time.
I, I, I wanna help them all.
So we would just bump Nebo forward because of Rich Valley's is more of a time crunch, so it, the sixty to Nebo would go to Rich Valley.
Yeah, just, just so you understand, the Budget Committee recommendation right now is a total of a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred as a grant to Rich Valley Fair, as long as they can come up with sixty-two thousand themselves.
Right.
So what I was hearing from Mr. Stevenson was, instead of making that sixty-two thousand they have to come up themselves, make the full one seventy-five grant to make them a done deal and wait on Nebo.
I, that's what I'm trying to say, and, and, and then with it online with Charlie, I, you know, we gotta have a detailed thing, what comes through the gate, what goes out, where it is, they gotta give us everything.
Yeah.
Not just this time, but right on from now on.
If we can set it up as.
I'd like to see at least three years' financials.
Yeah, but that, that puts them in business, you're not shutting Nebo out, you're just delaying.
But that's an additional sixty-two five that me personally wasn't taking into consideration to give Rich Valley. I still would prefer to see that they do something to raise money on their own.
You, use their, have them pay sixty-two back and transition that over to the Nebo community. As a, as, as Rich Valley goes, so does the Nebo community would go. So quicker they pay that back, then we can, well, I'm not sure the word would use, but, but allocate for that, for, for the, for the Nebo need.
And no next year's. Oh, you got, you got Allison's Gap Community Center too.
Right.
Put it on next year's budget for Nebo and Allison's Gap.
I just personally would like to see them put their own skin in the game too.
Well, we would have to hold the, the, the title to it, so to speak, until this is some dollar figures repaid, correct?
Can, can you do a hundred and twelve thousand dollar grant and then transfer money to the EDA? Requesting the EDA give them a loan secured by the building for the other sixty. And then the EDA takes a deed to trust or a lien on the building for guarantee of payment back, right, of the sixty thousand dollars, that's some low interest loan.
In, in essence, that's, that's ninety percent toward what was being reco- um, recommended. The, the second Budget Committee conversation was talking to a bank rather than the EDA, but it really makes a lot of sense if the E, EDA's gonna serve as the fiscal agent, we go ahead and ask them to serve as the linking source also.
They can. Yeah, in charge, I mean, it's up to you, what your recommendation is, the EDA's the one making the loan, right? The EDA would be the one that would set the rate, obviously you have a lot of pull with the EDA, so you could recommend. And if you fund the EDA money, or if you're expecting the EDA to pull it out of their own budget, but if you fund them extra money for this purpose, right, we're giving you an extra sixty thousand dollars to make a loan to this community center. I don't know that you need to do that, I'm just thinking out loud. But if you're trying to make them pay something back, then you grant them a hundred and twelve with some conditions maybe, whatever those conditions may be, and then you loan them the other sixty and have them pay it back in annual payments, one do after the fair's over. They give you a payment after, after the fair.
Okay, let's go ahead, uh, I'm gonna end discussion here right now. Let's go ahead and, and vote this, uh, we have, we have a motion from the Budget Committee, let's go ahead and vote that down.
No, it's a committee recommendation, so you can't withdraw.
So we're gonna go ahead and, and all those in favor of the committee recommendation signify by saying aye. All those opposed likewise. Sounds like nobody wants it and everybody's against it. So now we'll entertain, let's take it one thing at a time. And let's, wanna start at the bottom with the Rich Valley Fairs. Somebody wanna make a motion there? Is what we need to do.
You help me through this, go ahead with it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve one hundred and twelve thousand dollars to the Rich Valley Fair.
As a grant.
As a grant. And I guess request. We do sixty-three thousand from the EDA as a low interest loan, and that we be the fiscal agent for the project.
EDA service.
Excuse me, EDA serves as a fiscal agent for the project.
I'll second the motion. And thank you.
Any, any, uh, more discussion? I'd like to at least add.
I do need to add that, and that we wanna see three years of financials.
Well, I don't think they can provide us with three years of financials, that's my, that's my problem.
Well, then I don't know that.
I, I think we just have to be able to step in and do current year good accounting practices and have a good control of the gates and expert and.
I would hope that they could give us.
I think she would, I think she's been there three years.
Well, we just need, we, we just need to vote, verbalize it, that we want good gate receipts and so forth.
Whether it's a year from, you know, whether it's three years prior, but we definitely want three years in the future.
Right, next three years financial statements.
Yeah, once, once they take our money, we wanna see what they do.
Is that okay to word it that way?
I, I wanna see past and future.
You can't, there's no past.
And just that she's been in three years, and if she's been doing it, I'm not just gonna give money.
I think you ask for the three years, if she can't produce it, she can come back to the board and ask that you waive it.
I, I, I'm good with that, Mr. Chairman.
And then she can come back and say, I only have two years, will you still give us the grant with waiving one of those years?
So I don't wanna speak for the EDA, but we can make this recommendation all day long, but if the EDA says, I'm not giving this money unless we can see finan- financial reports.
I'm good with that.
All righty, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Okay, sounds like we got that one, now let's go to the next one.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, the twenty-seven thousand dollar roof replacement for Edel Fire Department.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? Just like to point out, that was not their full request, but that's what we thought was the most important. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? That passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty-five thousand dollar well replacement for Conorac Community Center.
Have a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? All righty, sounds like it's unanimous.
Do we need a motion to go after tobacco money for Nebo?
No.
That's already gonna happen, we're gonna throw it apart for that. We, now we'll have to have a motion, we'll have to have a motion to accept a grants, but.
So we didn't shut the door on Nebo, we're gonna look for tobacco money.
We wanna ask the Tobacco Commission to fund everything.
That's great.
We got several other locations that need, need our help. We have sort of ignored our rural communities the last few years.
There used to be one in the church over in Plaguehorn Valley, Charlie. That's the one that was on this side of the mountain.
All right, the Budget Committee's second meeting?
We, we do have a second committee to report on the April seventh, and I'll, I'll, um, be as quick as I can. The first item they discussed was fourth quarter appropriations, you have on page one oh nine, the summary of, of those, or the listing of those. Total appropriation of twenty million, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Motion was made by this, Chilhaway District Supervisor Michael Sturgill to approve the fourth quarter appropriation as presented or as requested. Uh, Rye Valley District Supervisor Laurie Deal seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. Motion, uh, recommendation from committee.
Can we not add that two hundred, that Fund Seven appropriation right on that, right there?
Well, it didn't come from the committee.
Okay, all righty, I'll, any, any discussion on this? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, sounds like we got that.
Uh, next item, we've already talked about the community center funding, uh, that was related to the EDA's involvement. Uh, the third item they had was a budget transfer request. There's a memo, and I think it's in your packet here, from Mr. Williams regarding some difficulties we've had, we continue to have for CDL drivers. Um, currently, we have the nine positions, and he's asking that we have a budget transfer uh, from, uh, the building and zoning's nuisance claims to the solid waste collection claims to help increase the salaries from, the starting salaries from thirty-one thousand two hundred to thirty-five thousand even. Um, that number, that thirty-five thousand seemed to be the magic number that we, uh, heard when we were doing the interviews. The basis of the transfer would, was that we're not using those funds as the projects are moving through the court system this fiscal year anyway, so let's make better use of them and we can, um, um, budget it next year. So a motion was made by Chilhaway Supervisor, um, Michael Sturgill to recommend the approval of the budget transfer request of eighty-five fifty from building zoning fund to solid waste collection disposal, uh, with your line items there, to allow for the increase of CDL drivers. Rye Valley District Supervisor Laurie Deal seconded the motion and it was unanimously approved. That's a recommendation from you committee.
All righty, any discuss, any discussion? We're asking for the budget transfer, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous.
Uh, final action, um, recommendation we had was related to the RFP for the full auditor services. We went through the R, RFP process, advertised Bristol, run-up times all the local newspapers, mailed the, um, RFP documents to several accounting firms, and still only had one submit a proposal. So, um, following the conversation, um, the motion was made by Chilhaway District Supervisor Michael Sturgill to authorize the county administration to negotiate with Robinson Farmer Cox to execute the agreement, uh, contract. Rye Valley District Supervisor Laurie Deal seconded the motion and it was passed unanimously. And I'll say that Robinson Farmer Cox, they're the ones that have done our audit for the last several years. Um, I've, um, I've had a lot of experience with them, so I, I've been, I've been pleased with, with what we've gotten here. That is a recommendation from you committee.
All righty, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous. Did you, did we need to do the update on the community center funding?
Uh, that was just the EDA, was that, did the EDA's involvement?
Right.
Was there anything different? I don't think there was anything different with that. I'm sorry, that was a recommendation, my, my, my apologies. Um, regarding that, um, EDA's involvement, there was a motion made by, uh, Chilhaway District Supervisor Michael Sturgill to recommend partnering with the EDA to consider serving as fiscal agent to help facilitate the local support. And Rye Valley District Supervisor Laurie Deal's taken into motion as a recommendation from you committee.
Okay, so, committee recommendation, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like it's unanimous. Okay. Building grounds committee.
I'm, I'm happy to.
You can run it.
Okay, so the, um, committee met, uh, April seventh at two o'clock, they had one discussion. So, the, um, committee met, uh, April seventh at two o'clock, they had one discussion item, and it was related around this, the RFP process for the county needs, county building needs assessment. We had an extensive, um, conversation and about the RFP process, we had six proposals, I believe, um, seven. And we interviewed, um, four or five. So, after all the interviews went through, um, the one that stood out was AECOM out of Roanoke. Mostly because they came, they seemed to be the best prepared, most prepared. They came with, um, recommendations for, um, what to do, even before they knew exactly what we were going to be asking them. And it seemed like they were reading our minds, honestly. They also brought up the, uh, potential, we talked about the potential of, um, historic tax credits. If we do something with this building here, which would bring about forty-five percent of the project as, um, grant or, you know, cash rather than loan funds. Uh, so the recommendation from the committee, uh, or I, I made a motion, or a recommendation to the committee that we go with AECOM. Following that discussion, uh, a motion was made by Rye Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal to recommend approving the fee of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars with AECOM to conduct the building needs assessment study. Park District Supervisor Chris Ratliff seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. That's a recommendation for committee, and I'll say that we have fifty thousand in this year's budget and fifty thousand proposed for next year's budget to fully fund, uh, whatever the needs are.
Alrighty, any, it's a committee recommendation, do we have any more discussion?
Is that ARPA money, or is that coming out of the budget?
Right now, it's, it's been general fund proposed.
Just that it blows my mind, though, the study cost a hundred thousand dollars.
I will say that this will be more than the normal, the other studies, I expect some architectural plans to come out of this one's, for instance, like what we can do with this building to, for renovation wise.
That ought to be a whole lot of plans coming out of a hundred thousand dollars. That's just, that's just, that's just next thing to hold them together. I mean, I don't know how many studies we've done lately, seventy-five, a hundred thousand dollars, and these people are just taking advantage of it. I don't get it, in four months we're gonna be done, pretty much what they're gonna do is walk the halls and say, hey, you need a new room here, you need a new room there. It's just, it's just pretty ridiculous.
Well, that's committee recommendation, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
I'm gonna vote against it, it's causing costs.
Okay, six one.
That's it. The Budget Committee report.
Public Safety and Broadband Committee.
Mr. Sturgill, or Miss, is it? You wanna, you want me to do it or you can take it?
You can go ahead.
Okay, uh, we got a joint committee meeting with Public Safety and Broadband, um, on March the seventh. At eleven AM, uh, in attendance, myself, Mr. Sturgill, Mr. Widener, Mr. Ratliff. And then staff president Sean, Lisa, Curtis, Shannon, Kendra. And we also had Sheriff Schuler, Chief Deputy Johnny Jono, and Captain Mark Blodens, Sheriff's Department. Also Detective Wes Thomas from MDP, and Paula was here as well. Uh, we had guests that day to come speak of the hot topic that we're all discussing, Nikki Skinner from ATNT. And also Garrett McGuire, who joined us virtually. Uh, the first item that we discussed is a presentation from ATNT. There is, um, a program out there known as FirstNet. Uh, it's something that public safety agencies are, are using for, uh, part of their radio system. So what they have to offer is right in line with this radio project that we're working on. So, basically, the reason that we wanted to have this conversation with them was, um, cellular service is a huge request and a huge need in our county from a lot of our citizens. So we thought with our broadband build out, our need for, um, radio upgrades, and then also the need for cellular expansion, what, what better time to do it all together and have a cost savings? So, we are in conversation with them, um, talking about maybe sites moving forward, and they also have, um, micro sites that they can put up that'll, like Claymore Valley is a good example, that little stretch through there that hardly the sun reaches, um, they have little towers that they can put up that stretch for a mile or two, to, to, um, implement service there. So, basically, when we finished up the meeting, uh, the deal was to send them maps of what we're looking at for our radio project, uh, where our broadband expansion's gonna be, uh, and then basically continue the, the work forward. After that, we discussed our radio feasibility study. And Shannon Williams gave us an update on that, and the product is, is in phase two. And we're also getting more people involved with our weekly radio meetings, such as representatives from each town, the fire chiefs and EMS. Um, we, I'm a little bit frustrated because one of the things that we'd asked from this study was options. Here's option A, option B, option C, but apparently that cannot be done, um, until we go on through the RFP process. So anyway, hopefully we will see that at some point, but I think this conversation with ATNT moving forward will help us, um, make more progress than what we have so far. Next item on the agenda was the Chiefs meeting, um, it was held on Monday. Prior to our Public Safety meeting, Dr. Bruzo was asked to give a rundown of the EMD progress. What you all know, we implemented, um, the first of the year in our dispatch, the Emergency Medical Dispatch Program. Um, and it's operating well beyond expectations and improvements are ongoing. And Dr. Bruzo gave credit to the openness of most dispatchers to learn and progress. Uh, monthly improvement meetings are aiding in the advancement of the program, so I just want to take a minute. It is, um, tele, uh, nine-one-one dispatch, um, week, I guess that's the right terminology, so.
Communications week.
Yes, communication week, so, um, now's a good time to give them a, a round of applause for what they're doing with this new program because they really did step in Control Officer Week, and just recognizing those folks for all they do. Uh, then the next item, uh, we discussed, actually, a motion was made regarding this topic, uh, for Smith County and the Town of Chilhawee's memorandum of understanding for the new training building, um, in Chilhawee. And Mr. Crawford presented a draft agreement related to the ARPA funding that is being provided to the Town of Chilhawee for the regional training building. This agreement formalizes the operational expectations with the town being a primary caregiver and the county committing to an annual payment of fifty percent of utility cost, preventative maintenance, insurance and janitorial cost. Uh, it's expected, and that's expected to be less than the currently budgeted ten thousand. He also noted that the expenses higher than five thousand will be planned to head forward for budgeting purposes. So he requested the approval of the agreement to begin the training building approved pending final review by the county attorney. So a motion was made by Royal District Supervisor Courtney Widener to recommend approval of the Smith County Town of Chilhawee MOU for the training building pending county attorney's review, and that was seconded by Michael Sturgill, Chilhawee District Supervisor. And that agreement is starting on page one twenty-four.
And I'll, I'll note that the, the, they did provide us a layout, which is up on the screens.
Alright, that's, that's a committee recommendation, do we have any discussion?
I have.
I, I have a quick question for Miss Deal, it's.
Go ahead.
Referencing back to the, um, um, the dispatchers, I'm sorry, I've lost my place here. Are, are they staffed up fully, or are they still looking to hire more people, or?
We're still, uh, one position short.
Still one, what does that bring their numbers to?
Twelve.
We have fourteen funded positions right now.
So they're, they have.
One's empty, so it's thirteen.
Thirty.
Thirteen, okay.
We fill two of the three that were open.
Gotcha, thank you.
We're currently, uh, in them two, they're still training as well, because it takes quite a bit of time to get, get training, especially with the EMD now.
And are they, where, where are they physically located when they operate? Are they in the courthouse, or are they in another structure?
The dispatch?
Yes.
Then the sheriff's office.
Okay, gotcha.
I'll bring it down there one day.
Which.
Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Which I know that, and I'm just saying this because I like to reiterate it every time I get a chance. When we're talking about this building study and where everybody's gonna go, we really need to consider the sheriff's department and their location because all it's gonna take is one hazmat accident at the forty-five and our dispatch will be shut down.
Or flood.
Or flood, so it is not in a very good location.
Okay, getting back to our memorandum of understanding now. I have a problem, I guess, with section one, point, one point two. One, one point, one point two. Uh, I understand ownership of the land would be with the town. But if we're gonna pay half the cost of the building, I'm, I'm, I'm old school. If we're gonna have to pay half the cost of the building, I will own half the building.
I agree with you, a hundred and ninety-five percent.
I, I just don't like giving it away for it. Uh, I just, I'm sorry, I just, that way we have a little more right down there than we just say it's their building and their land.
Yeah, that's true.
Don't ask me for money, you ain't gonna give me something out of it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed what you said, the location.
Uh, the one point, one point two, page one twenty-five.
It's one point.
It's under ownership and property entrance of the parties.
It's the.
Gotcha.
Location there at the farmhouse.
You know, they own the land and handle that, so I understand that. But if we're gonna build a new building, I think we need to own half the building.
I agree, we'll just give them a, a park down there and put them a farmer's thing on it, along when you're gonna give us something back.
We paying half from them half.
Yes.
If you haven't ever toured the facility, you gotta enter sometime, look at what all, what all the trucks are.
It is neat, I'm not, I'm not down with it, and I don't mind helping the town, but I'm like Charlie, put our name on it.
I don't fault that either.
Yeah.
I guess so, is it in order to get that done, we need to vote no on the, on the current motion? And then we come back and then the motion to say, does that sound agreeable?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll call for a vote on the original motion for us to approve this. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Oh, confusion, lost track.
You rescind the aye?
I rescind my aye.
Okay. All those, all those opposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I believe that the motion pa, uh, fails. So I now entertain a motion to approve it with the change of the ownership.
Did, did you make that?
No.
I'll, I'll make, I'll make the change of, uh, improvement of the ownership.
Okay, any more, any discussion on the new, uh, uh, motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
We seconded.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a second.
I need it too.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Okay, now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okey-dokey. It'd be awful if they come back and say they won't agree to it. Water and Sewer Committee meetings.
That's me, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I called me daughter at nine thirty-three, eight AM. And I'm gonna come to you and see as best I can, but you're just looking at me, man.
I ain't either, I'm looking at screens.
As you all might know, we, in the past, we was wanting to have interconnection waters with, with county. Well, the county's come up with a unique situation, Mr. Rudd has found out. Good job. The town rural retreat has like a half a million gallons of water running in the creek. So we're gonna try to get a agreement with rural, town rural retreat for a unit connection water, where we get thirty-five thousand to forty thousand gallons of water per day. The PER study said that, uh, the rate would be two dollars and fifty cent per thousand, which we feel confident we can get that down to two dollars a thousand, which is a lot better than where we're getting it from now, as you know. And it's gonna even give us a, a water tank of the old brick, General Shell Brick Place for water storage. Their system is a higher elevation than Marin's system, so we can get feed more areas because of the elevation of it. And the construction cost would have to be added into that two dollars a thousand. But it's gonna save us eight thousand feet of pipe in the, in the cost of putting it in, which is a big savings in the help rural retreat. Also, for future growth, like I said, it's a higher elevation to town Marin provide water, larger portion of. Eastern part would allow for future expansion. And with all the, uh, ARPA funds coming and fairly infrastructure investments, we could, and county could appreciate a minimum of fifty percent loan forgiveness through that, and it would also, additional water lines, build up eastern system of Kewauna Road, Rocky Hollow Road, possibly Philippi Hollow Road. Mr. Rudd stated that while the water study engineers are still running the numbers, it appears there'll be enough customers in these areas to fully cover the debt service and operational costs, especially due to the appreciating grant funding levels. It was a committee recommendation to approve him continuing with this venture, and the Water Committee continued with, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, it's a committee recommendation.
That's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned.
Plus, it gives us regional, so to speak, and they, they really love regional requests for funds.
Absolutely.
Um, we, we love to take their money, so, uh, all those in favor, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise?
Okay, I've got, uh, maybe that water purchase agreements would need to be finalized with the town rural retreat. But this application should be seen as a good pay gesture to the town that the county's interested in moving forward. Ms. Richardson stated that this would add fire protection in the area. And Miss Deal added that fire hydrants scenario to assist those in Atkins side of the county. There's no further business, I've turned at nine forty AM. Thank you.
Alrighty, yeah.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
Thank you for saying that. I, I like to point this out every time we talk about fire hydrants, because I know for our water providing agencies, it's easy to cut costs by saying, let's not add fire hydrants because we can save X amount of dollars. When you do that, you are causing your, uh, customers to have to pay our insurance premium because of that. So, I just want to encourage anybody who's adding water lines or updating, taking into consideration those fire hydrants.
Alrighty.
May I comment to, on that study that they're doing for us on the water, I hope we're looking at replacing some of these old systems, just not extending, Atkins is over fifty years old, pushing sixty.
Top priority is gonna be replacing what we're fixing the water loss issues. But this one seemed a, a no-brainer to be able to fund the interconnect with rural retreat also.
Maybe when they're looking at it though, they can look into getting grant to redo Atkins all the way back to the Marin Master Meter. Also, while you're on, and I agree with you on fire, they need to be looking to some of these systems that didn't give them because the system went and didn't have enough money, taking one as an example. So I hope all that's in that study that we're getting ready to see.
Yes, sir.
And Pleasant Heights, when they put that water in, they put the T's in, but they never did put no I's.
No I's.
And while we're, one more thing if I could.
Well, you're the one who's wanting out of here.
Well, I know, I'm going with this town, whether it's working or not. While we're on water, I noticed you had a couple of Watson's gaps in Claymore, and the last three months have been extremely high. Are we working to solve that problem?
One of them was a bad meter, I think was, and, and.
Check valve.
Check valve was, was bad.
And check valve has been replaced.
Where, where was it, when did it get replaced?
Um, I will get, I'll get you that information.
I mean, you're looking at forty-one percent, thirty-seven percent, check valve caused all that? Then you go to the other system, you're looking at thirty-five and thirty-four, I mean, you're losing almost half of the water you're selling, you're buying half. You're buying it, but you're only getting.
That was one of their, that, that is one of the top priorities of the water studies, figure that, figure the water loss.
Well, the water study ain't gonna fix the water, you're losing all the places like this.
No, as far as, they can, they're, well, they can make recommendations for what we need to be replacing.
I know, but maybe need to be some maintenance checks and something done. You ought to be down around twenty or no more than twenty-five percent, those places you're getting forty and thirty-eight for three months, so. Even though this water study's going to, you gotta go to and do some maintenance and repairs, or we missing something that's went off in three months is my question. The whole, the whole thing of a water loss sheet is to see where you're losing money.
Absolutely.
And if, if you're, if you're getting up forty and thirty-eight percent, that'll be some. We need to do something.
You mentioned Claymore and fire hydrants, I just want to reiterate again, because I like to chime in on this every chance I get. I want to implore agencies in this county here. I want to implore agencies in this county who are not participating in automatic aid to do so because situations like Clayhorn, the more departments you have answering the call, the more apparatus that's there to, to do things like provide water, so they're not having to shuttle back and forth, 'cause that takes longer time, so.
We might be able to get some of this, you know, in, in, in your water. And Roscoe's talk there, and in your study, there, this talk with grant money out there right now, we might get, this is the time we need to be applying for places that don't have fire hydrants and sixty-year-old systems. I would almost rather see, don't get me wrong. We need that interconnection, we need that water source. But if we don't, we don't have to replace Atkins, it's got to come. I mean, and if now's the time to get the grant money to do it, or. I'm sure they'll give us something on the water study, I hope they just ain't charging us whatever they're charging us to come back and say, here's what you need to expand. I won't be disappointed if it is. I hope we're looking at what system's real old and where we need to upgrade it.
Yeah, Atkins went in in sixty-eight or sixty-nine.
That would've been one.
It's been a while. Alrighty, we're now up to the student government day.
I just wanna let you know, make sure you, everybody knew that, that Thursday, um, April twenty-eighth, same day we're having a board meeting. Uh, we're having a student government day, we're hosting some, some students here. If any board members wanna attend and participate in that, we, we're looking to put together a mock board meeting or, or, or something that, that'll hopefully gauge some, some interest in, in their, in their, um, desires for what they wanna do in the future, but I just wanna put that out there. You have a summary fact sheet there, uh, in your package.
What time do you want to hear?
Uh, nine thirty?
Nine forty-five, we just take over here. So we'll have them from ten to twelve, and then we feed them and have to have them back downtown at about thirty.
That's the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eight, yes, sir.
And that's also Opportunity Fair Day.
Opportunity Fair in Chilhau.
And three did sign up to be board members, so there's definite interest in your positions.
One of them should've specifically requested it.
They did.
Okay, good.
They did. I think it was yours, Atkins. I don't remember the third one, but I can find out.
Okay. She's gonna only come if she'll be there, so. You alright?
That's us.
Nine thirty will be here.
Okay. I've got it on there, now all I gotta do, remember to look at it.
I'll call you in the night.
We're to the court for the county, for the county attorney.
Can you do it?
Yes, sir, thank you. What's that?
I said, can you report on Ed Wolf Road first, just 'cause it's like such good news?
Yeah, Ed Wolf Road, the, they're having a tax sale April twenty-ninth, I believe is when they're doing that. So hopefully new owner will be there and he, he'll have a requirement cleaned up within thirty days, I think, is what they're asking, yeah. Shouldn't that be in the board? So that's coming. Uh, the other zoning things are still moving very, very slow, we gotta find some owners. Um, we're amend the Riverside thing, that's the next on my list, we're gonna find the owner address for Quell Run, so I can file that. Um, and then we gotta find the owner on Churchland that passed away and figure out how to notice that. Either by publication or try to serve the heirs, if we can find the heirs, she died in New Orleans. Um, it's a very slow process, I apologize, but we're, we're making some progress, so.
Did you give him Quell Run?
Yes.
I've got Quell Run.
Information, okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask you one thing?
Yes.
On the Riverside, do you know where that will go back to court?
I do not yet, yeah. I'll try to let you know. Um, we have to file amended lawsuit and then get her served again to get a court date. Yeah, so that, that's gonna be the challenge. Um, the other thing, we have had several requests probably in the past six months or more from the treasurer's office to release some liens from road projects. Uh, Green Valley, I think is one of them, and then, um, let's see, Green Hills maybe, Green Hills subdivision and.
Coal Crest.
Coal Crest, Clark Crest. Uh, so I have two specific liens today for two people. Uh, the treasurer indicated had paid, I prepared those releases. I also have a letter from him at the end of January with a long list of people that I think that project must've, everybody must've paid out around the same time. Uh, but it's got a, uh, several people on that list for Green Hills subdivision. Um, I would request that you make a motion to authorize the county administrator to release those liens as the treasurer reports they have been paid.
Tell, tell me, that's right behind my house. Tell me what happened. Was that, was that for road?
Yeah, it's a, it was the road sharing, um, rustic, uh, rural addition, revenue sharing project.
Revenue share.
The county paid half and VDOT paid half and we had a special assessment, um, to recoup the fifty percent.
So it's probably been ten years.
Yeah. So we'll have a lot of these coming up on the Green Hill.
Um, um, are we gonna, is it gonna be roll upstate maintained?
It already is.
It is.
Green Hill subdivision?
Well, of course, and that road probably is.
It's not the one you're saying about, if there were, we're gonna be trying to get it.
Now, that, that one is, is.
This says Green Valley Court Road Improvement. I don't know where that is, Green Valley Court Road.
It's one, okay, yeah, Green Valley is, is, Green Hill's the one that's on VDOT's, is the next man up, basically, and that was the one. It's been about a year ago, they reported that it was gonna be funded in twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, fiscal year.
Green Valley Court?
Yeah.
It's just before Green Hill.
The one where all those ice one trucks are parked.
Oh.
So we just need a motion to authorize the county administrator to assign these releases as the treasurer reports they've been paid.
So, man.
Yeah.
Motion in a second, any further discussion?
As long as Mr. Redd doesn't get a lead.
I'm good, it's exactly what, it's exactly where you're saying, I'm working at. It's right before Green Hill market, they're right in those, you nailed it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Well, I hope those are all around dark.
Aye. Any opposed likewise? Okay. That's for both places now, that's where the Green Hill and the other one, you mentioned.
Yeah, Crest, Clark Crest subdivision, yeah. I think that one's older and these are later.
It is.
Some people have already paid those off and these are some later ones coming in, I think.
I live on Coal Crest.
Yeah.
I remember when we did that one.
Alright, so, um, happy to take questions, we have, um, a couple things we're going to close session to discuss this evening. The only, the one thing that's on there is the Galahadon lawsuit. Um, we're waiting for the judge to rule on, there was a motion reconsider filed, uh, on the judge's last decision, and we're waiting for the judge to either make a decision or set a hearing and see where that goes from there, so. Uh, that's all I have to report on right now, unless you all have any questions.
Any questions? Hearing done, we'll go to the county administrator report.
And I'll be super fast, um, one thing, we're trying to clean up the, um, the, the financing, financials for Fund Seventy-Five, that's our CARES Act fund. Uh, it was set up as a separate fund, completely separate from the general fund and, and other finances. Um, of course, all the CARES Act money has been spent out, we were looking to close that account down, but there's two hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents of interest, um, remaining that's not been appropriated, so I'd like to request a supplemental appropriation of that out of Fund Seven Seven Five. So we can close that out and turn that, uh, money into the, um, uh, general fund coffers.
Seven seven.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Do we have a budget line item charge all that too?
Yeah, we did, we did.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Passes unanimously.
Next two items, and I'll, I'll say you, there should be a memo there on Hesger Days. Um, the next two items are more informational. We've had a request to consider a street light or streetlights at the intersection of Route Eleven and Old Ebenezer Road, that's where they're doing the turn lane, um, going just outside of Marion. Um, Railroad Drive, yep, um, thank you, not Ebenezer Road.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what?
Uh, there, there's a new intersection that crosses the railroad, but that you don't know about.
I would like, all of them needs to magically come out from there.
But. I know.
So it's.
It's Railroad Drive, yeah. Um, APCO has reported that they, they think the cost will be anywhere from three to five thousand dollars, 'cause they'll have to do some fiber splits and at least one, if not two, new poles. Um, and they don't, they also brought up, you know, if we're gonna bring one, um, light in, we probably need to put three or four as you staggered in, just to, to make it safer for a safer intersection. So what they are requiring or recommending is we wait until VDOT's done and out of the way, and then they come in and, and consider what options they may have. But I wanted to put that on your radar, 'cause there might be a, a cost involved. Next item, um, electronic board packets. I've been asked by a few folks to consider, um, what it would take to take all this paper and put it into a, a, an electronic format, so that we could, um, cut down on paper costs and, and make it easier to get the packets to the board members. And I just wanted to throw that out to the seven of you and see what your, um, thoughts were on the, on the options.
I'm fine with it, I prefer that anymore.
How you gonna get it?
Well, what we do is, uh, we can get, what, what I've done in the past is you basically have four hundred dollar Chromebook and we send you an email. Check emails.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Phil, you got to check your email.
And your PDF would show up in your inbox, um, or we could set up some other, there's three or four different ways we could do it, um.
I'm gonna get out voted here, but that ain't gonna work for me.
If it's a six electronic in one paper, we can make that happen.
I've, I've, I've been doing mine, other than the outline sheet, that's the only I print and do it all electronic here, as we go through.
And if, if we just have to do one or two, I'm, I'm, I'd like to get away from, and if, and if nothing else, we get them done Monday mornings and we can hit that send button a lot quicker and print one or two copies and be done with it. Uh, Mr. Col, is that something that you could?
Do we have email?
Yes, sir. We can set it up for you.
You do what you need to do.
I'll check mine.
I'll go from an email when I get here, I don't need all this crap anyway, I'm gonna hear about it, hold on. It's a waste of paper.
I, I, I just think that it, it could save some time also here in the office, you know, even if they're just not doing as many. I would, I mean, I, I, I prefer email myself, but I understand that there's some that may not.
I hate email.
I'm good with it. I just had to get one of them girls to get it for me.
Even if we could just get a back sum, I think it would be help, 'cause I mean, that, that could, that could help, because.
And we could change it to where it doesn't show up as on an email, but there are different apps that you, that would just say it's been transferred into your, into your laptop and it's there when you open up that app.
You can email it to me all you want, I'm not gonna look at it.
You've got something, that's what.
I was gonna say, you got quite a bit in your inbox, Phil.
Pick up a phone, call, we come to the board meeting, and you know, we, we best live there.
I'd say, what we'll do is we'll put together just a list of options and ideas and cost. And if we need to do it next budget year, but we'll, we'll put some, some thought behind it. Just wanted to get the, the conversation started, but we'll bring some more to you later.
If, I, I'm still, I sell, I sell timber every now and then.
You left, right.
Do what, towers?
So four electronic, four three.
I did paper.
Four electronic, three paper.
We'll have a fifty percent savings on our paper use.
That's all I had to report, sir.
Alrighty. We do have a closed session, but before we go in there, while we have the newspaper here, let's go ahead and do supervisor comic time. And this time I did remember to write everybody's name down, and I put them here, and I'm just gonna draw one, and that's the way.
What a great.
I'm first. Uh, I just, everybody have a good, a good safe trip home tonight, remember? Tomorrow's Good Friday, yeah, tomorrow's Good Friday, thank you. And, um, hopefully be with your family and remember what Easter's all about. Uh, we still a Christian nation, at least I think we are, I hope we are. Tolerant of other religions, so, everyone be safe on your way home. Uh, Phil, you're next.
I'm best oat and way, I'm good enough.
Okay. Chris?
Um, Mr. Redd, I'm sorry, I wanna, I wanna throw something out here, I noticed coming down the street on Main Street. A couple of years ago, or last year, I was talking about the, the dead tree on the courthouse lawn that was gonna, gonna fall. The other one that's on, I guess, the west end of the, of the lawn, it's got a heavy tilt to it. It still appears to be healthy, but somebody smarter than me that's a tree expert, maybe look at that and see if it's at risk of maybe blowing over. Won't hit the courthouse, but it's gonna come across Main Street. Mr. Widener, do you know who I'm talking about?
I think I do.
The dead one?
I may be pushing a panic button, but coming out of Charlottesville yesterday, I noticed all these trees that just were laying over on the road. And I would hate to see, um, well, they're cleaned up now, but they were, they were like, I would hate to see a wind come through and have that thing crash across into the buildings across the street.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Curry may have already talked to a reverse on that, but we can, we can definitely make sure.
I just wanted to throw it out there and put it on somebody's radar, take a look at it, see if it is a risk, if it's not, don't worry about it.
Thank you.
That's a one of a kind tree.
I'm sorry?
It's a one of a kind tree.
It, well.
I brought that up four years ago. And told it, it was dead, had to be brought down to other one.
Mm-hmm.
It's a one of a kind tree, and then people threw one seed.
Well, they can pay for that damage.
It's going somewhere across the street, I told them that for you.
Again, this one, this one is risk, but anyway, I'd like to echo, um, um, Charlie's comments there about remembering the, the reason for Sunday. Um, I'm not super religious, but I am spiritual, and I do believe there's a higher being, so, um, I think a moment of internal reflection on Sunday is appropriate and I will be quiet. Next.
Mr. Widener?
Well, I don't really have much, I'm just glad to see everything continue to move forward, everybody seem to be working on, side each other pretty good and everything, and I just hope that everybody has a, a good, good Friday and a nice Sunday. Be safe on your way home.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to bring up one issue that I would like to, to make a motion for in this whole discussion with AT&T and cell service expansion, radio coverage expansion, broadband expansion. Um, I would like to, for us to put together a task force, uh, 'cause I don't think we're always gonna have the ability to have those joint meetings. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to create a task force for radio project, broadband expansion, and cell service expansion, uh, with myself, Mr. Widener, and then staff appointed by Mr. Ut. And that way we can keep this going if we have to meet a couple times a week, um, or a couple times a month, whatever it takes. I just want, I don't want it to be a one meeting a month thing, 'cause this is a huge undertaking and I want us to have all hands on deck.
That was a motion by Lori, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Sounds like we got it.
Thank you, uh, and then, but then again, I do want to reiterate the importance of Easter and why we celebrate and hope everybody has a wonderful time with their families, uh, this weekend. And, um, I just wanna tell this board and staff how much I appreciate everything everybody does. And, uh, I think there's a lot of Easter egg hunts going on this weekend, I know Towne and Chilhau is having an event. I believe that the Towne and Saltville is, uh, the library there next Tuesday is doing an event, the importance of beekeeping. Uh, so our, our libraries and our chambers in our towns are doing a lot of stuff for, for kids over the next several days, so. Appreciate those if you can, if you have little ones, so. Other than that, everybody have a good night.
Mr. Col?
Well, Charlie, a good Friday, but I'm seventy-two years old, any Friday I wake up's good. But I wish everybody the best, God bless each other, and keep in your mind those people in Ukraine right now. They are absolutely going through hell. And that's, that's a shame. Just keep them any prayers.
Amen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
I look forward to the, uh, Youth Government Day, Student Government Day, and we'll, hopefully we'll have great participation this year. Uh, and like I said, we're also doing the Opportunity Fair, which I've had several calls of people wanting to put tables down at the Christian church, at Chilhau, the GM. And every senior that is present that day in Smith County Schools will be going through Opportunity Fair. Youth Government Day students will be going through in the afternoon. And there'll be two sessions in the morning with Chilhau and Northwoods seniors that are not Youth Government Day going through the first, first session for an hour and a half, and then second session. But, uh, we'll be the Marion students that are not in Youth Government Day. But, uh, just to show you how hard people are looking for people, employees right now, we, we've had more calls than we've ever had. People calling, saying, hey, can I, can we get a spot there, 'cause we wanna give these kids a chance to get a job, so that's a great thing for our county. Also, I agree, let's remember the true meaning of why Easter is, what Easter is, let's spend quality time with their families and, you know. And I know you all know this, but unfortunately on a sad note, Chila High School has lost two fine educators within the last couple of weeks. We talked about Shane Keith, who was Rick Levin's brother, who's a former board supervisor member, and Emily Donovan, a math teacher, passed away last week after a long battle with cancer, so, uh, these people have left here way too early in life, so.
She's young, ninety-two, right?
Forty-four years old.
That's real saying, Billy Dunyan was a good man.
Yep. That's Emily, I told Emily.
That's Emily, I taught Emily physics and calculus when I was teaching, uh, she's valid at twenty for class. Really glad to hire her back as a teacher there, and is a big loss to that school, where she was a teacher, so. Please give those families your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Now we need to go into closed session, we have three items, so, somebody wanna read that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we enter closed session under Code of Virginia, section two point two dash three seven one one, A three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property related to solid waste property update. Uh, A five, business industrial prospects discussion concerning a business or industry considering expansion for which no previous announcements have been made related to Project Cardinal. And A seven, consultation of legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation related to appeals to land use decisions, two items under that topic.
Second. Okay, have a motion, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? And I guess we'll let Mr. Williams stay in here with us. Thank you.